Dear of celebration and in this court, we'd like to have introductions. I would start with, um, Sekia Benjamin. Just, uh, I'd like to introduce her.
Oh, I'm just gonna mention it.
Say your name.
Just say your name.
Just say your name.
Oh, okay. Cover on. Well, that's all. Just if you need to use it.
This continuing place.
Through the job for social services, Sekia.
I'm the program manager of the regional center. I'm getting this council program manager.
I'll get to talking people closer to our.
Ralph Scorsese.
Ralph Raniere is getting that one.
Good morning, Escobar director for the regional center.
My name is Sibyl, right here.
Alvaro Rodriguez, executive of financial services.
Greg Dean went here.
Good evening, Mary Sue America, Pharaoh and the company.
Mary Joe Paris, purchase and business manager, the D B A one.
And so, senior program analyst.
So, I'm the manager of work processing.
Really, yeah, I'm meeting options.
Actually, we got a new adoption. Larry Solomon, member of E C.
Um, we're glad we're organized.
Sheila Colwell, program manager.
President, Sean Martin, manager of the visualization department.
We need the army manager to control.
Shannon Anderson, program manager, early starting take.
Good evening, Tiffy Alexander, program manager.
Mary River, program manager.
Alan Smith, Department of Developmental Services, liaison to I R C.
That change clinical services, man.
Mark Henry, consumer support technician of central files slash chief's control. Consumer F C committee member and son, a former board member, Kathleen S. Henry.
Patricia Glass, U A unit, I R C.
See Martinez, necessary for safety.
Deborah Mann, revenue supervisor.
John Carbell, program manager in the regional center.
Kevin Haines, program manager inland regional center.
Butter Haines, program manager inland regional center.
Good evening, Mary Jo Bacon, program manager intake and assessment.
Good evening, Gina Gregory, program manager, I R C.
Good evening, Susan Gomez, another way director.
Christie Burchett, parent.
Vicki Smith, executive director, state council on developmental disabilities, area board twelve.
Therese Cragness, owner operator, innovative business partnerships and family member.
Maurice Cragness, co-owner, innovative business partnerships and also, Aaron.
Lila Valdez, assistant program manager inland regional center.
Tamara Happily, assistant program manager inland regional center.
Dan Tolk, from seven, Chris Tom.
You may.
Good evening, Jane Willetts, controller inland regional center.
Hello.
Carrie Gilbrook, Westbound Communications.
Amanda Marcelo, Westbound Communications.
Emily Stillian, family member, conservator.
Nancy Newman, family member and conservative.
Patricia Harold, inland regional center.
Hey, you guys missed me. I'm Stephen Miller, C I T U and Leo Tull, consumer advisor.
I surely took your thunder.
Israel Abajo, manager of.
Thank you. Um, well, I'm sorry if I put my. Cracking pipe for him all.
I'm Peter Aston, that's my name, Ken.
I'm in at Larry Smith.
I'm Nara Beth Field.
Denise Robinson, I'm the V A C representative.
Trump is good.
I'm a mirror, African.
Tom goes down.
Tabatha, Tabatha.
Be the nurse.
Okay, so, um, thank you everybody for one more. Now we'll go on to the reading of our minutes and we have minutes for both January ninth and February thirteenth. So, do you think we can set up?
It moved that we approved January ninth.
Motion, January ninth. You have a second, a second? Okay. I'm sorry, seven.
Second, second.
So, shall we do somewhere thirteenth?
I'm looking at the, uh, February thirteenth.
No, I'm favorable. No questions, yet, please.
No, I was saying, uh.
So, the notes have been approved.
Right along here.
Okay, so now we're gonna have our public input and we will have somebody five minutes each. And our first person will be. Vicki Smith and Eric Breckoff.
You don't know the reason why I always sit on this side. It's a long walk and I'm out of breath and then you know how bad I shake my. Okay, so, uh, well, I appreciated the presentation tonight. Something doesn't add up about the math, though, because most people don't look like they're over twenty-one. They were here in seventy-one, something doesn't add up, so. I also realized the difference between a board member and a bureaucrat now. When I started my first, I didn't say project momentum, uh, Karen Gilman, when I was in my past life. Um, there was people, two people pulling me from, uh, from both sides and I remember a very wise person telling me once that one of them did the right thing for the wrong reasons and the other one did the wrong thing for the right reasons. The difference between the bureaucrats and people who give up their time to sit on these boards is that you are supposed to do the right thing for the right reason. And that's what differentiates a board member from a bureaucrat, so I want to thank folks that give their time to do that. That being said, um, it's really, I'm here to, I was gonna come and tell you about all the great things going on, but we're kind of at a stalemate. So, um, I do have a question and it's more of a point of clarification. Um, I haven't seen anything from July first on of any contracts that anyone drew by the board. So, it's just a point of clarification, has inland regional center not issued any contracts that exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars since July first? I haven't seen anything come before the board. Um, that would be even a residential home, level four, that's licensed for vendors with four beds, exceeds the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I haven't seen anything come through the board for board review or for public, uh, to hear the board review. Uh, so it's a point of clarification as to whether this regional center has issued a contract, any contract that exceeds two hundred and fifty thousand since July one of two thousand and eleven. That was a requirement, for those who are more than me, just a reminder, there was a requirement in trailer bill language that the board must review, uh, any contract that's issued out. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next we'll have, um, Christine. Burchette. Burchette.
Oh, good evening. I present to. Um, to go over, uh, basically a requirement in the legislation that was passed in March two thousand and eleven. And it's in regards to the welfare institutions code four, six, two, nine point five. And basically, this particular statute has to do with transparency and having items on the website, um, such as, uh, annual independent audits. And by the way, I should mention that was passed with urgency in March two thousand and eleven. And here we are, a year later, and the websites do not have these items on it. Um, so independent audits, biannual fiscal audit, regional center, annual reports, contract awards, purchase of service policies, names and types of services and contact info for all vendors, except consumers or family members, board meeting agendas and improvements of open meetings of the board, bylaws of the board, uh, annual performance contracts. It goes on and on and on. I won't go over everything, but it's, but it's right there codified in four, six, two, nine point five of the welfare institutions code. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's now been a year and it was passed with urgency. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is tomorrow, there's going to be a hearing in Sacramento, I believe, at one thirty, televised on Cal channel, having to do with abuse at some of these institutions. And, um, encourage you guys to, to watch that. And lastly, something I brought forward before, I thought I'd take the time to bring it forward today. I really urge this regional center to consider a parent advisory committee. We have an advisory committee for consumers, we have one for vendors, um, we really need one for parents. A lot of parents feel strongly about that and I would really like to encourage you guys to consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're gonna have, um, our executive report and call lead board, Dr. Cutler.
The report that he wanted to go over with the law was primarily related to the, um, executive committee's conference call that was held with Mark Hutchinson and Brian Littlefield regarding the status of the probation. Um, it has been a full year since we've been placed on probation and, so the department wanted to go through that with us. Um, they reminded us about the audit, uh, that was done about a year ago as well. The department has reviewed it and, uh, we also did file an appeal, uh, as the, as the, we filed an appeal as the corporate board. And at this point in time, um, the department has turned that responsibility over to someone else to review it, um, so that there would not be any veil of conflict within the unit. And we should be hearing soon about, um, the department's statement and indication of where we stand with that audit. They also brought up that they wanted to be certain that the board was aware of the different concerns and complaints that had come in relationship to staff having issues and concerns, that they wanted to be brought to the attention of the board. And they, as Department of Developmental Services, are very anxious to help inland move forward and get off the probation just as quickly as we can. And so they are wanting to see, um, all of the different things that we have put in place to assist staff and to work together to, um, hopefully make it a much more positive working environment and, uh, work alongside staff as, and the board move on, um, the staff to move forward in that direction. Um, the inventory has been completed, that was in the major areas in the probation that they were concerned about, as well as in the audit. And our procedure is in place, it meets the state standards and we will be completing that every six weeks. Negotiated rate issue, um, the, uh, there were five agencies that we needed to go back and renegotiate the rates on and four of those have been completed and the last one should be coming out at the end of this week. And that information will be submitted to the department. There was, um, oh, a letter was brought forward, um, from a family that had written a, a statement saying that attorney fees had been placed, um, on, families get a letter every year stating the services that have been purchased by the regional center or the path or southern dollar. And this particular, um, letter had an error in it that listed attorney fees. And basically, those fees should have been paid out of operations as opposed to purchase a service. And so it, it was an error, uh, it had been corrected back early in, uh, two thousand and eleven. And, uh, all of those records were reviewed, there were no other consumers that experienced the same issue. But the department wanted us to know that the letter has been sent to the state's controller's office. There were discussions about board training, staff training and training, um, that would be put in place to support our two new directors. And they, overall, the department felt that those things were moving forward in a positive way, um, but there is always work to do and we need to keep on that path.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Also, in relation to, um, our discussion with, uh, the people from D D S, uh, Dr. Cutler had prepared a statement to present tonight because there was some concern about, um, the information that happens to move to D D S and people feeling uncomfortable to share in person. So, if I could just read this letter from, from Dr. Cutler to you. He says, "As he begins this conference of this evening, I want to start with a topic that is an important concern for all of us right now, how employees' morale is. Over the past few weeks, several staff members have come forward anonymously to share concerns regarding issues and policies that are suffering low morale. First and foremost, we thank everyone who has come forward and continue to encourage any employee who has concern to share them with management and board for inland regional center. We understand that there is a fear to share information, but let me reiterate, our list of wars policy is in full effect. To that point, we are now in the process of implementing an audit committee as the next phase of the list of wars procedure. In addition, we are working on a short-range plan that will further encourage employees to not only share their concerns, but more so voice their recommendations in an arena where they feel safe. We all knew that existing probation would require a lot of work and a great deal of change within our organization. And make no doubt about it, change is hard. The board and management top priority has been and will be to work together to lead inland regional center on a path where we provide exceptional service to individuals with developmental disabilities." Thank you. Um, we might have our financial report.
I think you, yeah, I think you can leave me next.
Oh, sorry, that's okay.
Um, just to bring a couple of things, um, to your view, I would like to reintroduce our two new directors. Um, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you, Viscavo Rodriguez, who is our director of financial services. Would you like to stand? You can stay right there for a minute. And Salon Escobar, who, uh, is filling the position of director of community services. Um, thank you very much. Both of the, of the men come to us with a great deal of background in helping community services and nonprofit corporations. Uh, Gus has a very extensive background in healthcare, uh, came out of the hospital room, uh, worked with both large and small hospitals, uh, many, many of them on profit end, as well as had a few that were on profit making. Um, did small community hospitals, uh, all the way to seed recycling. So, he has a great deal of experience in working with contracts, granting negotiations, working, um, in the whole area of medical and trying to juggle those books as well, not juggle. Manage those, uh, balance that. We don't cook the bugs, right? Um, Salon has come to us also working with a number of nonprofit corporations, um, in finance, negotiations, grants, contracting. And, um, both gentlemen have attained their masters in business administration and have worked certainly in the finance world. Um, Salon has some added experience in working, um, in the public arenas with having to be responsible for being out in the press and always presenting that message of the corporation. And has done strategic planning and long-range planning for corporations. So, both of them have a great number of skills and talents that will really benefit our organization. And this is getting another third week with us, so we're very pleased. Um, also, uh, I just wanted to, again, uh, take a moment and thank you all for being here tonight and helping us look back at where we've been and also moving forward. I think that, that one of the things that comes to my mind when you look at starting centers and having those come alive is when you look at the land of the legislation and what all was intended for people with disabilities and when you see it work in the way that this center has been able to do that, um, you can see the power of what that piece of legislation put into place for people with disabilities. And it's, it's really exciting to be able to come together and celebrate forty years. Uh, maybe things happen in this community and making them come together for the people that we support. So, thank you all for being here. Um, we had a good report on Medicaid waiver. I know you've been hearing about that for several months and every two years, the Medicaid audit will happen. And we had a very, very good report this year. Our staff just did an excellent job of preparing and getting things built together. Those of you that have worked here, you know what that's like. And our team did a wonderful job and came back with, um, good suggestions, good recommendations, and also a lot of accolades and passing the back for the job that we did. Thank you. Okay, um, let's see. I think probably, um, one of the things I do want to share with you is that Gus will be talking with you just a little bit about the fact that our spending situation at this point, um, we're in a deficit for operations and we are also in a deficit position for purchase of service. And we'll be looking at different methods and means of bringing that into the positive side. Uh, we have just a few months left and we've got to get especially the operations side balanced. And so we're gonna be working on that. We had the opportunity of having, um, the administrator from Alton Regional Center work with us to learn some of the ins and outs about the regional center system and how the reporting works and some of that kind of thing. And that was very, very helpful, uh, to bring that, those ideas and those issues together to give in some tips on how to make that work better. I think that that, well, I have one other, other thing that came up as a question in your meeting last, um, mo, last time. How did you, we were interested in kind of the turnover rate of the way we ended the year in two thousand and eleven. And at that point, at, at, at the end of December, we had fifty-one people that had left the organization. Thirty-seven of those individuals were voluntary and fourteen of those were involuntary. And when you look at the overall average of the turnover percentage, it was about nine point four, which is minimal, um, for the size of organization that we have. And, uh, staff have done a very good job of working along the fundamentals and doing the coaching and inventory that is really needed, um, to help staff move forward in a really positive way. And so we felt very good about the way that the year ended. And that was a question that had come up last, in last four minutes, so I wanted to share that with you. Any questions or?
Thank you, Carol. Um, well, now I have our financial report.
Good evening again, Alvaro Rodriguez, the group of the financial services and, um, I've. I spoke with Patrick, um, here this afternoon about the financial reports that I, the foundation, have included in the package for this month. And the numbers are projecting a little higher than, uh, what they were in December. The, the, the thing that we're doing with financial right now, we have been telling you for the last two weeks, it's been a smooth process of transitioning, uh, the documentation and the information from, uh, the, the. In the middle of this, uh, about country road to follow the audit trail and to document and to have a comparative, uh, set of financial statements to go back to the last set of financials that I had before December against, um, February. And in the process of doing that comparative analysis, um, as of, um, Friday, I realized that I need to stress test the numbers, um, a lot. The numbers that I'm seeing as of December, in certain areas, security be a little bit soft and others were documented as I would have wanted to. And it, as of last day, was projecting, um, a lot, uh, a lot of that. And the numbers that we were coming up for, um, two days in February was a little higher. In the extent that I have to note out on the numbers as of December, because I cannot verify them and validate them, my template right now has all the information for December as I found it, plus all the numbers that we have following the format and the procedures that our several teams will validate for my predecessor. So, enough, 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 um, questions came up to, in my opinion, that I need to stress test the numbers. It's in so much banking terminology nowadays. And by that mean, by that I mean, there are things that have to do with our cut-off page when we put the reports on the system. What is the last run of the payables that are included at month end? Which is the last pay period that is included at month end? So, I need to, I need to verify those cut-offs to make sure that I'm projecting accurately for the next four months, what remains of the current history. I need to account for extraordinary items that my predecessor had accounted for as of December. Some of those extraordinary items may have already been paid. But now I have new extraordinary items that I need to account and project to the rest of it. Extraordinary items have to do with employee payouts, have to do with some extraordinary expensive professional services. And part of the process of doing the financials for the first time over the last two weeks is needing verify the numbers, uh, to see them. Do our comparative, uh, input to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples and that we document the process that we go along. The documentation that I had to go and buy was a January statement. So, we're having to do a level of double hacking on the numbers. Or if this number come up in, uh, December, we need to make sure that it's the same number that we're putting for this month. And so, for, for that reason, I don't have, I spoke with Carol this afternoon, I said, I don't tell town people, actually, it was over the weekend, I don't tell town people to send you the, the finalizer of financials because I have more stress testing to do on the report. Um, I hope to have all the information validated, stress tested and documented that we could, um, then mail the report to each board member shortly after we completed. I hope to have it done by, um, today's Monday, we had the preliminary numbers, we're about, we're in the process of validating everything again. And I'm working with two people that are assisting me and, um, I'm, I'm thinking that to be safe by Friday. safe by Friday, we will have the financial statements all sooner.
Does the deficit appear to be greater or smaller than your predecessor led us to believe?
This is part of the process that I have. As of November, according to the financial statements that I see on the books, the various was close to $400,000 negative. As of December, that number had dropped down to about $300,000. Now I'm projecting a little higher. So the number, but the problem was that, as I look at his financials for November, December, there's about three or four versions of, well, there's two for November, two versions. And so it seems that he was maybe adjusting the numbers on the fly, and so that is part of my process. The process is not hardcore. It involves a lot of judgmental, what I call judgmental decision-making. And part of the judgmental decision-making has to do with projecting the payroll that's present to the end of the year, and also projecting with the P O S side, the nature. On the operations side, we have a surplus on the non-payroll line, and we seem to have a significant deficit on the payroll side. So that is the part that I'm really going to be stress testing. Now that I have all the information in the template, now I'm going to be stress testing those numbers. Looking back at this template, what was seen clearly, because we did that now, and I can have a same number loaded onto the system and side by side, but I need to be satisfied. I need to take ownership of that projection we have as of December, so that I know that I'm putting the right numbers. And it makes no sense to have apples to apples if I'm studying the wrong assumption anywhere. So I need to take ownership of these projections as of December to move forward. So now, that's on the operations side. On the ops and P O S, that's the, P O S is your.
Purchase of services.
On the purchase services, the biggest question that I have right now, and Carol mentioned a gentleman that came in to help me from the Sacramento office. He's a, I'll probably call him guru, he's been around, I think it's a long time, and he was a joy to have for a couple of days in the way that he shared his experience with me, and he brought some special reports and he helped me download some information quickly from the system and automate the process to where he populated a template that he shared with me, and quickly download information and populate and self-spreadsheet. We couldn't add with yourself, we had difficulty validating the leg bills as of December that were being prepared for the financials from Mr. My predecessor. Now, I'm not saying he was doing it wrong, I'm just saying that I'm, he and I had a little bit of a problem following these numbers. So this is part of the stress testing that I need to do on both the P O S and the op side. On the op side of the payroll, that I need to validate down to the employee level, what we projected for, and on the P O S side, the leg bills. So having, I hope we're doing, of just, the issue more than we already, any other questions about my process and what I'm working?
On the op side, is the surplus in the non-payroll items greater than the deficit in the payroll?
No, and that's why we have a deficit, because on the payroll, deficit is greater than the op side, the non-payroll surplus.
And it's my understanding from our conference call, and the state's been pretty clear that they're not going to provide us any more ops money. It's still.
That's correct.
That's my understanding.
So if we don't, if the board, does any cuts, the policy issue, or the staff issue, it's a policy issue, at least in my opinion. So if we have to balance the budget, what happens if we don't balance the budget? Where does that money come from? I'm not going to write you a check.
My understanding is that we can not afford to deal with the year without a deficit. And that's my understanding from the gentleman who's been in the house, and that's what Carol's understanding is.
How did your predecessor understand this?
That's correct, that's correct. And it's part of the funding, the way it works. And I understand also that if we end up with a surplus, then DDS may allocate those surpluses to what the city. So we have to be very accurate on how we end the year. We have to manage the deficit, and we don't want to have surplus for other reasons. So that requires a management plan on implementation of what things we need to do. Carol would be very proactive with us, the directors on looking at that.
We have to end it planned.
We have to come in at zero, and we will be doing with managers tomorrow to go on planning to do that. We have kind of a ballpark number that we're working towards.
We're going to talk about this later, but I'll bring it up now. If we don't meet again until May the 14th, will that six weeks give us enough time to save between $300,000 and $200,000?
No, we need to act quickly.
Okay. Now, my understanding on the op side, or on the P O S side, is it was somewhere in the 20 to 20 million, 20 to 25 million dollar market. Is that, am I still not that old that I can remember?
That is me, it's purely consistent. One more qualifier, my leg bills that I'm projecting at the end of February versus the leg bills that were projected in December, I'm counting up to that number, so that's the.
That's positive.
So from that perspective, it's good that DDS thinks that we have this huge amount of leg bills coming in, because then we have an opportunity to maybe come in lower in that plan. It's the operations side that works the most.
Do we have an obligation, or should we politically notice the state on the P O S side, who are anticipating it coming, and that this is a tangible common one?
For, every month, there's what's called a sufficient devaluation report that does go to the state, and it indicates and gives the state a picture of where we are. And so they're very well aware. It's not a secret in any way.
Yeah, we can read our books through the computer every day. Yeah, we said that in Portland, as a matter of fact, that's what I was in the process of doing today with a lot of my managers, who we have to get because these will be out tomorrow. And that's part of that process that I was figuring with you. And that's what we have lifted, leg bills. And that number versus for a group of injecting the entity with the gentleman that came from Sacramento, we have a little bit of discrepancy there. For a group, on the leg bills, a pool.
So, we brought this up before, and I'm a little nervous because the clock is ticking, and the amount of money isn't going down, but the time is. And if I heard you right, what you're telling us, if I'm reading between the lines, is it's a payroll issue.
Oh, the operations side.
Right.
You mentioned.
So do we have a hiring freeze in place now?
That's one of the things we're going to be talking about.
At the risk of setting the employees, I think the board should take the decision that we should have a hiring freeze as of now, regardless of what you mean to come up with. Because if there's a window between now and the next meeting, I could hire 20 employees. I'm not saying that anybody would do that, but it appears that the problem to save money is that our payroll is higher than our income. And I wouldn't like to see any more people put on payroll than we absolutely have had it. And the only way to stop that is basically for the board to make a policy decision that we're not going to authorize any more hiring, control our payroll until we get some plan that shows us how we're going to bring this in line and not end up short at the end of the year. And I hate to be that way, but that's where our costs are.
But I think it, I think.